I'd like to start the evening with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Tonight is going to lead us by Larry Levitt. Larry is a husband of Lisa, father to Stephen, Jim, and daughter Jen, sorry. He's a 20-year teacher, teaching at all levels in Peabody High. He has taught 30 years here in Peabody in self-defense course and business of Larry Levitt. It would be hard to press to find somebody who loves Peabody more than Larry Levitt here. Again, he bleeds blue through and through, and I'm proud to have him here tonight. Heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Mr. President, if I may, some of our...
Please.
We have invited guests here tonight, and like through you, to take the opportunity to have them introduce themselves. It's our student government counterparts, if I may. To my left is...
Tell a little bit where you are and where you're going to school next year.
Hello, I'm Sarah Buckley. I'm a senior at Peabody High, and I'm shadowing or Tom's counterpart for Student Government Day.
My name's Katie Dupont. I am a student at the high school. I'm a senior. I live in South Peabody, and I'm Ann's counterpart, but Ann won't be here, so I'll be with Tom. But I'm happy to be here, get experienced before I come and make my proposal.
Just out of business.
Oh, I'm sorry, Josh. I'm sorry.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joshua Correa, Central Peabody resident, good old Tremont Street, senior at Peabody High, and here to learn everything there is to know about Peabody government. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much for being here. Opening meeting law statement. This meeting is being televised live by cable, channel 9, and being taped by Peabody Access TV. It's also being recorded by a city council stenographer. Moving to hearings, since there is none, moving to reports of committees. Industrial Community Development Committee, Councilor Gould, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilman McGinn, for giving me the heads up there. Tonight in Industrial Community Development, we had full attendance by all subcommittee It was attended by myself, Councilor Melville, Councilman McGinn, Councilor Rosignol, and Councilor Turco. Also in attendance and very valuable input was Councilor Manning Martin, and Councilor O'Neil, and Councilor Rosignol. Oh, you're already on the committee. The first item we kept in committee was the covered recycling containers and other issues related to recycling. We're waiting for Mr. Peter Gamache to come back to us at a further date, and we'll set that up. Second was a presentation by attorney Jack Kelty to change the uses column in the IL district. After much debate by fellow counselors, there was a motion by Councilor Turco, which failed five to nothing to deny that we move forward as a recommendation of the subcommittee. Also, there was another presentation by attorney Kelty to delete the word fifteen in the last sentence in Section A and replace it with the word thirty, and that would have, after much discussion, that would have been something the council wasn't in favor of, so we voted five to nothing, not in favor of advancing that within the full committee. So that is the report of Industrial Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of interest, Tom. It was that the motions were to approve, and they both failed five to nothing. I think you said the motions were to deny, but...
Thank you. Motion to approve, and they failed five to nothing on both motions. Thank you, Councilor.
Just point of order. Wouldn't we, under regular rules, bring those out to the committee of the hall, revote them?
Yes, we were going to do that, but they were both recessed hearings, so we're going to have to do that back when we reconvene the recess hearings. I think, Tim, correct?
Yes, the recess hearings have to come back before this body, so I think at that point in time, you'll take the committee recommendations and make your formal vote on the zoning.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it takes a full vote.
Human Services Committee, Councilor Manning Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Services Committee, consisting of myself as chair, counselors Melville, Mitsoulas, O'Neil, and Rosignol met this evening, and we also had a full complement of the council, so I appreciate everybody joining us and participating. We had two items on the agenda, and one was pest issues in Ward 1, and Sharon Cameron, the director of public health, was kind enough to join us and give us an overview of the issues and why there is kind of an infestation of rats in what we thought was Ward 1, but what she educated us, that it is across the city, and that it is kind of a national issue. It's not just a Peabody issue. She was very informative, and we also had a gentleman from A-1 Exterminators give a presentation on it as well. And it is a public health problem, you know, rats can transmit a disease to humans, so she gave us quite an education on how to deal with baiting, trapping, disinfecting. And what is of particular to note is when our constituents call us with these complaints, us meeting the counselors, we of course call the appropriate authorities to address it, and her department is very proactive and is really on the ball and goes right out to those neighborhoods. But what constituents need to know is that you in particular need to contact the public health department with the city so that they can intake it properly and that they can follow up. They will come out to the home, they'll check the area, they'll trap or bait if necessary, but they do need that personal contact because it's a protocol that they follow up with you. So if you do contact us, we of course will refer it to them, but you need to do so as well so that it will be followed up according to protocol. And what was interesting to learn was that there are a lot of nuisance conditions that you may not be aware of, and you might be causing them, which number one would be excessive trash, compost bins, bird feeders, and vegetable gardens. I mean, I have a bird feeder and a vegetable garden, and I'm not so sure I'm going to keep that bird feeder. I had no idea. So these are things that we need to educate ourselves and maintain them, and a lot of things, and also like pet waste, you know, need to pick up pet waste because a lot of these things attract rats, and there's been an increase across the city and again nationwide with the warm weather and everything else. So there is a lot within our control, and the department of our public health division has been very proactive in addressing this, and they're also putting together an RFP to go for a regional integrated pest management system. And from that, we're hoping as a council to get from them a template for our ordinances, a template for languages on how we can improve our ordinances and tighten them up on businesses, construction, to get ordinance recommendations to kind of rodent-proof moving forward, whatever our ordinances, if possible. So it was a very informative meeting, and I really appreciate Sharon Cameron and her department for coming forward tonight and all the work that they've done in that regard. So they've done a great job. That was one item. The second item was about the recent census data regarding the doubling of Peabody's poverty level, and we had another lengthy discussion on that, and that is such a complex issue that we reached out to Laura McNeil of NASCAP, who's an expert in that area, and she was kind enough to give us an overview of, again, what is a national issue and not necessarily just an issue confined to Peabody. And she went over a lot of interesting data that the recession was behind it, employment rates are behind it, loss of manufacturing jobs, and other, all these kind of moving parts to what is causing that number. But she also, what was interesting, said that the poverty level in Peabody isn't increasing because people are moving in to Peabody. It's rather that Peabody residents who are already here are entering into the poverty level. So we as a council, when we move forward and when we think about taxes and transportation and affordable housing, those are the things that we need to keep in mind when subjects come to our desk, and we're the policy board for the city. We need to keep those things in mind. So it was quite an interesting discussion. We learned a lot, but it is very complex, and I appreciate Laura McNeil coming forward, and NASCAP does such a great job, and I appreciate her coming forward, and so it was very educational. So that is a report of progress, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any counselors? Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gavell on Finance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, the Finance Committee met after the other lengthy meetings, and in attendance this evening on behalf of the Finance Committee were myself, Councilor Gould, Councilor Manning Martin, Councilman McGinn, and Councilor Turco, as well as a full complement of all the other counselors here. We had three items on the agenda. The first item was a transfer of funds under the date of February 15, 2018 regarding the fire overtime budget. The issue at hand was the fire department, due to sick time usage as well as injuries and retirements, is requiring additional overtime staff, just about every shift resulting in the requirement for us to fund the overtime budget to the tune of an additional $450,000. The request was made by the mayor through the fire chief, and a motion was made and approved by the committee. The motion was to take $450,000 from the unreserved fund balance account 100-0-0-0-35901 and move it to the fire budget for the overtime, which is 122-0-0-51-130 in the amount of $450,000. So moved.
Roll call, vote.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
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 Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gavell.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing, one absent.
The next two items on the agenda this evening for the Finance Committee were specific to the schools, and requests by the school committee and the mayor for us to submit statements of interest on behalf of, first, the Welsh School, and, second, the Center School. The statement of interest process, as was explained this evening, is, you know, a necessary step in the school building authority's requirement if we are to seek funding from the school building authority to offset the cost for the city to the tune of 56.14%. So annually, we typically submit a statement of interest for our highest priority needs and hope that we get selected by the school building authority for reimbursement. This year, the highest priority need was identified as the Welsh School, and secondarily by the Center School. The Welsh School is for repairs while the Center School is for a potential replacement. There's no guarantee from the MSBA that they will approve these statements of interest, but again, it's necessary for us to submit them in order to be considered. As a result of that, we have to take a vote on each of the statement of interest, which we did in subcommittee, and those were both approved in subcommittee. But for the record, I'll have to read one of these, and then the other one, I'll just read the change factor in it. So the motion being made this evening is having convened in an open meeting on March 8, 2018, prior to the closing date. The school, the city council of the city of Peabody, in accordance with its charter's bylaws and ordinances, voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 8, 2018, for the Welsh School located at 50 Squamsgate Avenue, Peabody, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is Priority 5, which is replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy-related costs in a school facility. The specific objective of this SOI is to seek MSBA support for building repair, including conversion of this all-electrically heated school to natural gas, replacement of the existing obsolete and no longer serviceable HVAC system and controls, and the replacement of windows and exterior doors throughout the school. And the city council hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the MSBA. So moved.
Roll call, vote.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gavell.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing, one absent.
The second motion is similar in nature. The change in the motion would be that the specific objective of the SOI for the Center School is a Priority 7, replacement and renovation of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And the educational deficits of the Center School are articulated in the Center School SOI and include the need for gym, gym space, cafeteria space, food service, servery, and the kitchen space, much-needed upgrades to classroom, meeting rooms, and electrical plumbing and HVAC systems. So all other aspects of the motion previously read with those changes are made. So moved.
Roll call, vote, please.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gavell.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing, one absent.
And if I could, as a part of the meeting, we got some updates from the mayor. I'd like to move on to suspension of the rules to receive the letter dated March 8 to late communication regarding Jen Davis. We were updated that Jen received the P to C O'Brien Award from the MRPA this year, which is the highest honor that can be received for somebody in the parks and recreations. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Also, under suspension of rules, a late communication from his honor, the mayor, regarding the visit that they made to the senior center, the Trigene Life Center, for the purpose of explaining property tax exemptions, which was an issue that was brought to us by Councilor Ann Manning Martin, and the idea was to promote further the understanding of what those exemptions include. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And last but not least, on the suspension of the rules, to receive late communication from his honor, the mayor regarding competitive bids for the bond note, and we'll, I think I'm going to refer that to Finance future meeting. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move to motions and orders and resolutions. Councilor O'Neil, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to request that through the city clerk, set up a meeting for the Human Services Committee to discuss coyotes, and specifically, there's been some increased coyote sightings throughout Ward 6 and other areas of the city. Just like to get more education for the residents in terms of possible interactions with them. Thank you.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 7A and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8K and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 9A, receive and approve all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8K and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 9A, receive and approve all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 9A, receive and approve all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 9C, receive and approve all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 9C, receive and approve all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On suspension of the rules, move to approve junk dealer's license renewed for 2018, Bill's Salem Music and Fofo's 136 Main Streets. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a co-motion with Councilor Mitsoulas to replace the berm on the left side of Roland Road from Abington Ave. to Colonial, and also fix the turf. We had a plow that tore up the berm, the whole length of Roland Road, and the turf behind the berm. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll also co-motion with Councilor Mitsoulas to, once the snow clears, see if we can take a look at the tree at number four Roland Road. Appears to be dead. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Like to make a co-motion with Councilor Turco to repave the sidewalk at the back entrance to St. Anne's parking lot on the Lynn Street side of Columbia Boulevard. From the opening of the parking lot to the grass strip on the sidewalk, it's pretty obvious. Thank you. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed?
Counselor?
Counselor?
Could you put that as emergency preamble?
Sure. Help me through that process, Counselor.
First motion would be to make a, for the emergency preamble, and the second is the motion.
So I'd like to make a motion, emergency preamble, to have that paved. It's quite a hazard. Thank you, Counselor.
We need a roll call on the preamble.
Thank you.
Counselors O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gavell.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
The preamble carries ten to nothing.
That, do I, just motion that I just made? So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Councilor Gavell. I'd like to make a co-motion with Councilor Turco to have the turf fixed in front of 255 Lynnfield Street. Again, a plow ripped up the turf all in front of this person's property. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
I'd like to make a co-mo, last one, please. I'd like to make a co-motion with Councilor Mitsoulas to have the tree, once the winter is over, to have the tree at number nine Jefferson looked at. It appears to be dead. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions, Mr. President.
Councilor Mitsoulas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I already made three motions. I haven't even opened my mouth. Thank you, Councilor Gould. I appreciate that. I'd like to go to Item C and H, C and D. I'd like to make a motion to receive, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Yeah, I have no motions, Mr. Chairman, but I just want to alert public services, that Public Works. I've been getting a lot of calls on potholes. I know we're all going to get them, so I guess you could throw that in a form of a motion, just, you know, just drive around or whatever you see, fill them up. They're all over the place. So moved. Thank you.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just remind everyone that the benefit, the St. Patrick's Day roast to benefit Haven from hunger is a week from Saturday. I'd love to have my fellow counselors come in and receive a little jab, but also anybody out in the audience that would like to come, we have tickets still available. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, it's the morning of St. Patrick's Day, March 17, at 9:00 a.m., right here in the Wigan. Thank you, Counselor.
Councilor Manning Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any particular motions, but I do want to request through you to Tim. We received, I think it's Item 8I tonight, from Stacy Burnson, the Assistant Director of Community Development. It's an excellent overview of affordable housing. We received it under the request this evening to change the inclusionary zoning. So I know that I had previously referred the matter of community development coming forward to give us an overview of our affordable housing stock. So this is a great overview. If you could put that into Human Services Committee where I referred that matter, that'll be helpful to us when we address that, if you could. I think it was 8I. All right?
Counselor, one moment, please.
Mr. President, I think, just a point of clarification. I think it was 8I from a previous meeting. That's what, if that's what you're looking for.
Councilor Manning Martin, you got it? Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Counselor, that was it? Councilor Rosignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the council's information, Councilor Gould and I are part of the Community Advisory Board for the Peabody High School's Student Health Center. They're going to be having a benefit and a fundraiser with the comedian Gary Gulman will be performing. That'll be on April 26, and it'll be at the high school. And if you need, tickets prices are between $15 and $18, and if you are interested in tickets, you can either go on Gary Gulman's website, or you can go through the Peabody Student Health Center. So I just wanted everybody to be aware. Thank you.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8B.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8E, all papers being in order.
Heard the motion. All in favor? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Haven from hunger is a week from Saturday. Love to have my fellow councilors come in and receive a little jab. But also, anybody out in the audience that would like to come, we have tickets still available. Thank you, Mr. President. It's the morning of St. Patrick's Day, March 17, at 9:00 a.m., right here in the Wigan. Thank you, Counselor.
Councilor Manning Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any particular motions, but I do want to request through you to Tim, we received, I think it's Item 8I tonight, from Stacy Burnson, the Assistant Director of Community Development. It's an excellent overview of affordable housing. We, we received it under the request this evening to change the inclusionary zoning. So I know that I had previously referred the matter of community development coming forward to give us an overview of our affordable housing stock. So this is a great overview. If you could put that into Human Services Committee where I referred that matter, that'll be helpful to us when we address that, if you could. I think it was 8I. All right?
Yeah. Counselor, one moment, please.
Mr. President, I think, just a point of clarification. I think it was 8I from a previous meeting. That's what, if that's what you're looking for.
Counselor Manning, you got it? Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Counselor, that was it? Councilor Rozagno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the council's information, Councilor Gould and I are part of the Community Advisory Board for the Peabody High School's Student Health Center. They're going to be having a benefit and a fundraiser with the comedian Gary Gullman will be performing. That'll be on April 26, and it'll be at the high school. And if you need, and tickets prices are between $15 and $18. And if you are interested in tickets, you can either go on Gary Gullman's website or you can go through the Peabody Student Health Center. So I just wanted everybody to be aware. Thank you.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of rules, move to receive Item 8B.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve Item 8E, all papers being in order.
Heard the motion. All in favor? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive Item 8F.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive Item 8G and refer to the special permit application upcoming to, by the, at the same property, by the same limited partnership.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And thank you, Mr. President. In reference to our discussions earlier tonight, I'm going to move to have the Health Department, through Sharon Cameron, submit language regarding a requirement for a pest management plan to be submitted with all new construction applications and blasting permits via city ordinance.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, move to request that Sharon Cameron from Peabody Health Department attend the next meeting of the Industrial Community Development Department to discuss covered trash receptacles as they pertain to the Health Department, and also present potential language for a city ordinance requiring such covered receptacles.
Heard the motion. All in favor?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. That jogged my memory. Tim, can you set up Industrial Community Development at your next convenience, please? Thank you.
On John's. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Councilor Turco, for that also. Council Melville.
No motions this evening.
Council Gavell.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, like to receive Item 7B and refer to the Finance Committee.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive Item 8H and refer it to the Finance Committee.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And just two, two comments. One is that I think with the norista that we had, with the rain and the wind, our city staff did a tremendous job, and they are to be commended for their preparedness. I happened to be in and around the city that day, and literally, there were people positioned throughout the city with bucket trucks and, and repair vehicles, and they seemed to be hitting everything as it was coming down, including when the signal light fell on 114 and the two telephone poles leaned forward into the highway, there were people there almost instantaneously. The corner of Lynnfield Street and near the brown, the street near the South School, there was a, a tree that fell, and literally within minutes, they were there. It was almost like they knew where these things were happening. So it was, it was tremendous to see that amount of effort. And it was also tremendous to see that the, the combination of the storage retention and the extra work that's been done in the downtown finally got the, the news channels 57 and Fox 25 to go look somewhere else for news stories, because there was none in downtown Peabody. The retention was good, even in, in face of the title serve. So my commendation to the mayor and his entire staff for great work that was done then and the recovery today. Again, you know, the plows were out early, the parking bans were lifted quickly because the streets were cleared. You know, you always get people who say, "We could do a better job on clearing the streets." But I think clearly, again, a fabulous job in terms of preparedness. So as one citizen in the council, I want to say thank you to all of the people involved in that. Appreciate it, their efforts. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if I may, I, I have to echo the sentiments that Gavell just said, and I know all the other councilors. The DPS, the forestry, the municipal light, everybody had worked so close together and did a great job. As other councilors says, they've been out throughout the, the community during the storm. And every person I spoke to who needed service had mentioned about how polite and how great the workers were. And it, it just doesn't go with just the workers on the street. It's the people in the office, the taking the phone calls. It, it was amazing how quickly some major issues were taken care of, and again, how quickly they just worked all together. So again, when you hear tonight that the, you know, N-Star is going to be days before they can get to Salem and other communities close by us, and Powerology is going to go on for days and hour, you know, hours and days, it makes you feel so good that you live here in Peabody and that our, our facilities gets right on it and takes care of these jobs. I had a gentleman today about plowing. He's been living in the city for 30-some years. I've known him for over 20 years. He does not give compliments at all. And today, he said, "What a great job the snow plows were doing." And again, for this guy who lives on Jennifer Lane, he doesn't give compliments at all. And for him to say today, right after, you know, back-to-back storms, our departments did a great job. So we're real proud of the, the men and women on the street and the men and women in the, in the buildings taking, taking these calls and setting them up. So I just want to say thank you to that. Also, last week, we had a meeting here for 15 King Street. It was well-attended. People of the community, elected officials, school committee members, councilors, city workers, and again, residents. We had representation from the contractor and the owner of the, the property. It was a listening session for them. They listened and took in all the information that the residents were, were speaking about. What they are looking to do is a condominium association of 55 and older owner-occupied, one and two bedrooms, and at a price tag that is over $400,000 for each unit. That is something that will have to come if it goes forward to this council. But one thing they are doing is reaching out, which I can, I very much appreciate, reaching out to the community and the residents for their input of what they're looking to do. The alternatives that's out there may not be as appetizing as this, but we are going to have another meeting and session with the public, I would say, within the next two weeks. So please look, look for that and, and please come. Thank you. We've got some things left over. Communications.
Mr. President, move to receive Item 8A under suspension of the rules.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive Item 8J under suspension of the rules.
Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive Item 8L under suspension of the rules.
Heard the motion. All in favor?